Okay, let's call this meeting of the Freetown Lakeville Regional School Committee to order at, what do you have?
I have 6:41.
Yep, all right.
Jean Fox.
Here.
Eve Owen.
Yes.
Sherri Baron.
Yes.
Jennifer Blum.
Yes.
Robert Clark.
Yep.
Laura Ramsden.
Here.
Will Sankowitz.
I'm here.
Steve Sylvia.
Yes, here.
Thank you.
And Renee, you mentioned that Jose is going to be recording?
He had asked me if he could. I don't know if he's in. I'm not seeing him for some reason, but if he pops in, he'll probably want to.
Okay, and nobody else would be recording then?
No, just us.
Okay, okay, thank you. Is there anyone here for public comment?
Yeah, I'm an Aponicuit alum class of 2014. My name's-
Oh. And your comment?
I'll have to wait to see what it's gonna be first.
Well, that's fair. Okay, that was, that's Sage.
Hi, I would also like to make a comment if possible. Hi, so my name is Jenny Carden, and I graduated from Aponicuit-
Just a point of order, Jean?
Yes.
I believe any, based upon the Zoom rules, there has to be a video showing of the person-
Oh, you're absolutely right. We need, we need the faces because we're recording for comment.
So anybody that's-
So sorry about that, Jenny. Anybody, yes, who, there's Sage right there, okay. Jenny, can you turn on your video?
Hi.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. All right, so like I said, my name is Jenny Carden. I graduated from Aponicuit High School in 2013. So as you've probably seen through our email campaign, the community has joined forces to demand that the district becomes an actively anti-racist institution. I know you guys are gonna be talking about this later, but I just wanted to put in my comment. So we had our five demands that we're asking of our district. The first, that educators become actively anti-racist, not just now, but always. Two, that race education begins in kindergarten, elementary school. Three, that systemic racism and Black history curriculum is expanded in all mandatory history classes. And four, that we add literature by people of color to all our English language classes. And five, that we make your steps to improve pub, uh, it's available to the public. So again, I know you guys will be discussing this in the future, but in this meeting, might I ask that you directly address our demands that we've emailed? In the past five days alone, we have had 233 members of the community sign a petition demanding these five changes. And that's only in the past five days we've had all of these people come together. And that is with, you know, the pandemic, so we haven't even been able to talk to people in person. This is all online. So that's a, that's a huge number for, for this amount of time. So, so basically, we would like for you to direct that in this meeting, address that in this meeting. And that, and we hope that you can, we can have a discussion as well, because we don't know what your resolution is. That's not available to the public right now. So when you guys do come to that point in the meeting to talk about the resolution and let us know what it is, we would like to have time to discuss that before the vote, if that's possible. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. It will be dependent on the time I will take you, but the language was essentially taken from the MASC website, and it is the resolution that has been circulating throughout the state.
And Jean, one other point of order, can I just, we have the speakers need to reference their city and-
Yes, you did.
As well as the town.
Town, yep.
Town, are you from right now?
I'm from Freetown, Massachusetts.
But which town do you live in? Sorry.
I currently live in Los Angeles, California.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanna say my comment is to second everything that Jenny said so well. Thank you.
Okay, Sage, and you're from what town?
I'm from Lakeville right now. I live in Boston.
Okay, that's helpful. And what year did you graduate, Sage?
2014.
Okay, so you're younger than Jenny.
If I could just second Jenny's comment as well. My name is Lindsay Cavalaro. Actually, graduated with Jenny in 2013. Just wanted to show my support for everything Jenny said. I currently live in Lakeville, Massachusetts.
Thank you. Thank you, Lindsay.
Hi, my name is Samantha Badenow. I also graduated in 2013 from Aponicuit, and I also second Jenny's motion. I also currently live in Los Angeles as well.
Thank you. Okay.
Hi, sorry. My name's Emma Hayes. I also graduated in 2013, and I would like to voice my support for the motion. I am from Lakeville originally, and I'm currently in Somerville, Massachusetts.
Thank you. And I see a Matt.
Hi, yes, I'm Matt Hacken, class of 2014. And I just wanted to second Jenny's motion and support her in making Aponicuit and the Freetown-Lakeville School District a more actively anti-racist community.
Thank you.
And Matt, where are you currently living?
Oh, I'm from Lakeville, but I also live in LA right now.
Okay, anybody else? All right, well, we appreciate your comments. Any other public comments? I think that one seems to have been the, the big one, and we do appreciate that. What's next on the agenda? Is it a reorg?
It is the acceptance of the minutes.
Oh, the minutes. We have to do the minutes first. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I moved.
Thank you, Sherri. Sherri Baron moved. Who seconded? Will?
Yep.
Thank you. Will Sankowitz seconded. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Any abstentions? That's a unanimous vote.
Jen-
Go ahead.
Jean, there would be one abstention.
Oh, who?
With this-
Oh, yeah, Jen. Oh, I do wanna welcome Jennifer Blum to the school committee, newly elected Freetown resident. And we, we're happy to have you, but yeah, you have to abstain. Not the next time, though. Okay, so that motion passes with one abstention.
So a roll call vote is required.
Yep.
Jean Fox.
Yes.
Eve Owen.
Yes.
Sherri Baron.
Yes.
Jennifer Blum.
You abstained, Jennifer.
Abstained? Oh, abstained, sorry. Okay, that's okay. Robert Clark.
Yes.
Laura Ramsden.
Yes.
Will Sankowitz.
Yes.
Steve Sylvia.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now we go on to reorg.
Correct, Mrs. Fox, do you want me to facilitate?
I would like that. Thank you, Mr. Maderos.
Okay, Superintendent Schools, I'll facilitate, and I'd be looking for a motion, as we do annually, for a, the chairperson, which this time through, based on the regional agreement, would be a Lakeville individual. So do I have a motion?
I move Steve Owen for chair.
Sherri Baron makes the motion for Steve Owen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Clark, Bob Clark, second. Discussion. Roll call vote, I believe, most likely, right, with this circumstance as well? If you could do the roll call vote, Renee?
Yep, Jean Fox.
Yes.
Do you, I can't do Steve. Can I do Steve? No.
No, point of order, I think you asked for any other nominations.
Oh, that's true. Rick?
At this, at this time, are there any other nominations for the chairperson of the school committee? In the absence of further discussion and additional nominations, we go back to the roll call vote.
Sherri Baron.
Yes.
Jen, Jennifer Blum. Robert Clark.
Yes.
Laura Ramsden.
No.
Will Sankowitz.
No.
Steve Sylvia. One, two, three, four yeses, one abstained, and two noes.
The motion passes majority. I will now turn over this portion of the meeting to the new chair of the school committee, Mr. Steve Owen. Steve?
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, everybody. Moving on along. The next point is the subcommittees. Based upon some feedback by members, there's some reorg within this. I'd like to-
Point of order, just the other, the other positions.
Other positions, correct.
Oh, okay, I'll take a nomination for vice chair.
Nominate Jean Fox.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Clark, and a second by Mr. Sankowitz, is that correct?
That's correct.
Any other nominations? Renee will do a roll call vote?
Eve Owen.
Yes.
Sherri Baron.
Yes.
Jennifer Blum.
Abstained.
Bob Clark.
Yes.
Laura Ramsden.
Yes.
Will Sankowitz.
Yes.
Steve Sylvia.
Motion carries for Jean Fox as vice chair. For the position of secretary, do we have any nominations?
Nominate Jennifer Blum.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Clark, and then a second by Mr. Sankowitz. I will open this up to whether Ms. Blum can actually take the nomination. I don't know. Ms. Blum, do you wanna respond to that? Is this a position that you can-
Are you talking about conflict of interest with my job?
Correct.
Okay, so I cleared all that out today, and the only conflict I would have is check writing ability, which I've been over already, and I would not have any check writing ability, so therefore I can.
Okay. Are there any, thank you for clearing that up. Are there any other nomination for the position of secretary? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Jean Fox.
Yes.
Eve Owen.
Yes.
Sherri Baron.
Yes.
Bob Clark.
Yes.
Laura Ramsden.
Yes.
Will Sankowitz.
Yes.
Steve Sylvia.
Yes.
Motion carries for Jennifer Blum as secretary. Move to the position of district clerk. Open for nominations for district clerk.
I nominate Laura Ramsden.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Baron, and a second by Mr. Sylvia. Before we, are there any other nominations? Ms. Ramsden, you are not up for election, correct?
No.
That was always a concern in the past to certify, so that satisfies that condition. Hearing none, open up for a roll call vote.
Jean Fox.
Yes.
Eve Owen.
Yes.
Sherri Baron.
Yes.
Jennifer Blum.
Abstained.
Robert Clark.
Am I allowed to vote on these because I wasn't here before?
Yes, you should be able, this is going forward, so your vote is, is valid.
Okay, so I should stop saying abstain?
You can still abstain if you want to. That is your right, but this is one that you can vote in the affirmative or the negative.
Okay, so yes.
Okay. Robert Clark.
Yes.
Will Sankowitz.
Yes.
Steve Sylvia.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, motion for Laura Ramsden as district clerk passes. I'll entertain any motions for, or nominations for treasurer.
Nominate Will Sankowitz.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations?
I'm sorry, Steve, I didn't see who seconded it.
I did, Renee.
Oh, thank you, Laura.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Jean Fox.
Yes.
Eve Owen.
Yes.
Sherri Baron.
Yes.
Jennifer Blum.
Yes.
Robert Clark.
Yes.
Laura Ramsden.
Yes.
Steve Sylvia.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. To go, continue on, we do have a number of subcommittee. And I know there was a number that wanted to move from one subcommittee to another. So I'd like to table the subcommittee organization until we are live at our next meeting in July, so that way we could have that discussion.
Yes, agree.
I'll entertain a motion to table the subcommittee appointments until the next meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion by Jean and second by Mr. Clark, is that correct? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. You don't need a roll call vote there. Moving on to, any presentation to this, we just did the organization, any other presentation?
We do not have any other formal presentations at this time.
Moving on to Agenda Item 6A, FY '20 Budget Status Report.
So, Mr. Owen, if I may, I'm gonna turn it over to the Director of Finance, Ashley Lopes, who will give us an update on where we stand relative to FY '20 in the close.
In your packet, you have an updated FY '20 sheet. It's consistent from last school committee. I also wanted to let the committee know that I met with both the Freetown and Lakeville Lawrence Leffman over the last week, and they have both supported to provide the district with some CARES Act funding. And that's gonna go towards purchasing Chromebooks. Because of the remote learning and distance learning, this is a great opportunity for the towns to support us. It's gonna be approximately 350 student Chromebooks and 250 faculty Chromebooks. We've already made, we've made the request for the purchase, and so those should be coming soon. Once we receive those, we will seek reimbursement for the two towns. Also, another note, in FY '20, we have a well down at Freetown Elementary School, and we talked to the Freetown Board of Sloughmen this past week, and they are going to reimburse us for the cost of the repair. So things are moving in the right direction. We're having great teamwork with the two towns.
Mr. Owen, if I may? In addition to what Ashley has articulated, as a result of that additional funding for the town, I would like to proceed, we have addressed all of those expenses, and we're looking to do the various projects that Ashley shared at the last meeting. I would like to proceed with the additional technology devices in light of the fact that the towns have supported us halfway there and in light of our upcoming task force and reopening commitment. It would be my certainly recommendation that we continue to move forward. I do believe Ashley has, has encumbered the money as it relates to that. We had moved forward almost all the other projects, and I'd like to proceed there. I think we can address some of the school committee concerns relative to plan and detail throughout the course of this summer before the start of the school year. Thank you.
Ms. Baron.
Ashley, could you just repeat the number of Chromebooks we're buying for students and for teachers?
Or it is 352 for students and 250 for faculty.
Thank you.
And just to cross-reference that, based upon the sheet that you presented last time, that's the number of Chromebooks that are expired, as well as replacing all the teacher Chromebooks, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And approximately, what's the dollar amount associated with that?
It is, one second, please. It is $185,000.
The superintendent is asking to move forward, correct me if I'm wrong, with the purchase of the additional 1,700 Chromebooks, is that correct?
No, that was not the full amount.
It was not the full district piece. We're looking for a 6 to 12 commitment, high school, middle school.
Which, okay. Any questions or comments associated with that before we? I will say, my concern is the, the lack of a plan. It's been something that we have been asked for prior, and we still don't have it. So to make a large scale purchase of that for six grades, I know we're not doing all of it. I'm concerned about a rollout strategy. I'm concerned about the overall equipment planning, what have you, associated with it.
Mr. Owen, if I may, I certainly, you, you have presented that, and I articulated that, and I think, I think we can, through, by the next meeting on July 22nd, spell out the specifics behind that piece as we do our reopening task force. Part of that reopening task force and making recommendations on guidance will reflect technology. And I think we can have a detailed, comprehensive plan and rollout as to what we're gonna do at both of those schools to assure the school committee that we in fact do have a plan relative to the fall.
And just to add some color here, the reasonable request tonight, so that way we can spend the money before being rolled over into E and D, correct?
Yeah, it's a timing piece at this point, and, and so, and again, an opportunity that we, we may not have in the coming years as we look at FY '22 and '23. I think we're up against some tough years. And so, considering that the town's commitment on those other devices, we didn't expect that. I think it's a great opportunity for us to proceed.
Mr. Sylvia.
The leadership team for that, I think that's a great plan, and given the uncertainty of the fall, I fully support that. Just question, does the purchase include a warranty, or is there an extended, like, what's the warranty information on that purchase?
So I do see Craig is on. I don't know if that's something that Craig could answer. I can pull the invoice that I have.
Just in terms of a protection for the devices for the students?
Definitely, one second.
And does the 250 for the staff, is that all the staff, 6 to 12, or is that all staff of the district?
Teaching staff, Mr. Sylvia. So replace their existing, which we're also getting to the expired stage as well.
Thank you.
It's Craig here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Greg, we can hear you.
Sure, yeah. We, we actually got a standard one-year warranty on those new devices, the 250 teacher and the 352 student. We plan on ramping up a parts department, basically, in our, in our shop at the tech department. We'll cover those. One of the things that I mentioned to the leadership team today was the possibility of offering an insurance policy that parents can buy with a device. So we're just at the early stages of exploring something like that. But that, that's basically the warranty issue with those devices.
Thank you.
Ms. Baron, I know you had your hand raised. Did that answer your question?
That's fine. I'm sorry. I, one of the problems with Zoom is that people come to your door, and I don't know who they are, and I lost part of this, but I think I just figured it all out now. Forgive me.
So I think the big concern here is, I think people can get behind the purchase, a large scale purchase of this. I'm personally having difficulty getting behind something, a large purchase, without a plan. And we're adding well in excess of 1,000 more units, and we haven't talked about resources to address that. We actually have a retirement coming out of the technology department. So I, I think this needs to be fully fledged before we go down and making a purchase from this, from the district. We've been asking about a plan for a long time now. So I, that's my trouble getting behind a purchase in this regard.
I don't know if all the members have. I, I'm confident that between the two principles at the 6 to 12 level, along with the Director of Technology, we can adequately answer and respond to that as it relates prior to the fall.
Ms. Ramsden.
What's the expected life expectancy of these Chromebooks? I'm just concerned that if we buy this many all at once, and they all expire all at once and reach their useful life, that we are gonna have to replace them at some point all at once, and whether we'll have the resources to do such a big purchase in the future.
Mr. Mack, can you respond to that, please?
I sure can. It's a great question, because the 352 Chromebooks we're buying for the students is one of those replacement phases we're going through right now. We have approximately 1,100 student Chromebooks, 350 are, are basically expired this year. The rest of those, 750, 770 or so, over the next several years through 2026, will have various expiration dates. The student ones we're buying right now expire in 2028. We, we actually got a model from Acer that gets us a valid device through 2028. You're right, we're gonna have to address that big chunk at that time or build up to it over the years in addition to the ones we replace. So again, we have, we're replacing 350 of the 1,100 we have. And then we're gonna, over the next several years, replace 200 or so at a time to keep up with that pace of expired computers. And then at the 2028 level, we're gonna have to make a decision about where we find the funds to do a mass replacement at that time.
Mrs. Ramsden, that answer your question?
Well, and just, but what about the 1,700? It answers the question for the 352, and I think that that makes sense in terms of swapping those ones out. But in turn, I'm just concerned that we're gonna have 1,700 Chromebooks in 2028 that will need to be replaced as well.
You're right about that, and what we have to do is, do we make a decision to, a few years ahead of time, plan to start replacing those, right, in inventory before they expire? Otherwise, you're gonna have to find the funds at that time to do that big replacement. I mean, think about it, we've, it's 2014, we went from, you know, a small inventory of Chromebooks to this, and I'm just talking 1,100. The teacher ones, the 250 teacher ones that we were replacing, we bought those, they're all expired this year. That's why we're trying to get those new teacher ones. There's another issue, right, that we had to buy that one chunk at one time. You know, Ashley and I have worked on that three-year tech plan with the budget idea of replacing a batch every year to try to keep up with the pace of expired Chromebooks. So that's kind of where we're going with that, but you're right. I can't argue with the fact that we have to, as a district, face that chunk of money or another plan to replace those big lots that we buy now in 2028.
But if I may, Mr. Owen, I just, again, looking at the timing of where we're at with FY '20, I think we can make those determinations and decisions in the, in the coming months and years. But, but my request is that we proceed with the encumbrance of the funds so we can secure the items and be prepared for this fall, and then have a more detailed plan as we roll this out.
What, just a question, what what would be the downside of earmarking the dollars that we would do for this technology purchase into a capital line item until the plan is in place? That way it's not in E and D.
I, Craig, I'll ask you to speak to it, but I believe my initial answer is that we would not be able to roll them out effectively, in a timely fashion. In addition to, I believe this is a supply, a supply issue relative to the, the demand right now as it relates to remote learning, but Craig, you can speak to that as well.
Yeah, I mean, any, any delay we have on ordering Chromebooks, right, we could potentially spill into the next fall of not having them ready for the first, you know, few days to distribute to students.
We have that issue today. We'll have, if we sign off on the purchase of this, we would have that same issue today based upon demand.
Well, the, yes, right, in other words, that the, the next tranche, the 1,050, right, that we're asking for to get to the regional, right, the 6 through 12, everybody's got one, one to one, that is the batch that I would be worried about, right? If we don't order those within the next few weeks at the most, I'm talking two or three weeks at the most, we stand a chance of them not being delivered and ready to distribute in the first few days of school in, in September. That's, that's the only worry I have. We're approaching that. We've, we've included what's called a white glove service in those devices so that they will come to us, already joined our domain, they're enrolled, they're ready to go, they're in groups, and they've been identified who student gets what. We basically unpack that batch of them, match them up with a bag, and work on a distribution for the students the first few days of school. So that's a, that's a big task, but we kind of have the vent- So that's a big task, but we kind of have the vendor doing some of the work for us. The 352 and the 250 teachers, we've taken that on ourselves. Our tech department's going to set those up and distribute those. So those are, in fact, I think, I believe I heard today, the 352 student Chromebooks are actually on their way to us now, I've checked, so.
Any other questions from the committee? Mr. Clark.
Yeah, I don't have a question, but why don't we have, why don't we have faith in the administrators and the teachers to use these computers effectively and get the plan going eventually? But I mean, I have faith in these people to use these in a manner that enhances education and the plan will, you're looking for a specific plan. I have faith that these things are going to be used effectively and I'm not worried about a plan. It's nice to have a plan and I'm sure we'll get a specific one, but let's have some faith in the people that we pay a lot of money to use them effectively.
I hear you, Bob, and we've talked about that in the past, but we won't continue that. So I guess just.
Rick Stone, I don't need any, I'm sorry.
I'll put out there that someone wanted to present a motion to.
We don't need Mr. Owen to motion, honestly. I'm just, it was really, it was an informational type of item. I mean, we can proceed administratively. I want, we're being transparent as possible as administrators and I've included my directors. Certainly, we want the support of the school committee, we want to take some action, but it falls within our budget and certainly lines for our directors to take action. We just wanted to bring it to your attention and support and let you know what in fact we were doing. Obviously, if you want to take the action to, you know, to show support, that's fine.
I'll open if someone wanted to make a motion. If I don't hear anything, we can move on to the next agenda item. 6B budget, town meeting update. I know we dressed up on a couple of things already on that. Anything?
Ashley, if you just want to comment, so I could speak as superintendent and then I'll have Ashley just to provide some details. I want to thank all of the board members that were present at both town meetings. There are a lot of school districts, I will say, that are envious of the current position we are in, that would trade with us in a second in the Commonwealth, that we have not only had one town, but two towns approve unanimously our budget. We are not in a 112 budget and we are prepared to move forward for '21, which is going to obviously be a challenging year. Ashley, do you want to speak to some, we already have some of the projects, I know it's going to come a little bit later on, but obviously, we have moved forward with town meetings. Ashley has notified the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that our budgets, that a budget has been approved. And I would say we're the minority, Ashley, correct, in relation to many of the districts not being at this stage?
We're one of less than 10 districts, regional districts, that have their budgets voted. So we're in really great shape considering, we did receive our letter today confirming that we are outside the purview of a 112 budget and we can move forward with what we have from our two-member towns. I'd just like to say I'm very grateful for all the work that's been put into this. We've really worked well, the two towns this year, and we were able to get something very difficult done before the end of June.
Yeah, it's a huge piece. It's going to allow, it's going to allow me, just so the committee hears, allow us to go ahead and go forward with postings that we've budgeted for relative to retirements, resignations, and positions. And so we'll be posting, we'll be posting at a time that may be very attractive to other members and experienced individuals and educators in other areas that have either been pink slipped or not sure about their job status. So we're very encouraged by that. We thank you for your support. Ashley will certainly be able to answer any specific questions, but we're going to proceed with our FY '21 budget.
Any questions from the committee? E S Y summer program.
Mr. Owen, if I may, I'm actually going to ask the director of Student Services to give a, she has a very brief report and one highlight is this summer program, just to speak to the E S Y program, the numbers, a couple of grants, items, and it'll actually knock off one agenda item a little bit later on. Liz, at this point, if you could just give a brief update on the summer program?
Sure, absolutely. So we have 80 students enrolled to participate in our remote extended school year. Participation is around the 50% rate, so considering the past three months of remote learning, I was pleased with that. We're also preparing some paper packets for families who did not prefer the remote learning but wanted to, you know, work with their children over the summer as well. We have the hiring done and we are proceeding forward with making sure all the students have their schedules and they're ready to go without a learning curve starting on July 6. We have already started working on the reentry planning for special education and how we're going to address some of the issues that related to the school closures and come up with a cohesive plan that we can hit the ground running in September. We're also waiting for the, continue to wait for the state guidance on reopening and obviously that will be a component of that. Last Friday, a grant opportunity called a Summer Learning Program Grant was posted. This was a grant that resulted from the school closures and it is going to provide opportunities for districts to submit, do a submission, a grant submission for potential compensatory services to be conducted over the school breaks, the natural school vacations in summer of 2021. So that is due in July and I will work with Dr. Jablinski because it's also available for ELL students as well. And so we want to be able to cover as much as we can under that grant. And finally, CPAC has scheduled its final meeting of the school year, July 1 at 6:30, and that will also be remote. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from the committee? Mr. Sylvia.
I just wanted to say thanks to the superintendent and Liz and Gene for facilitating a meeting. Just a follow-up to our last school committee meeting, we met with the CPAC group and the superintendent committed resource. I think we talked about a great plan to improve communication and work with the CPAC at each of the sites and moving forward. So I just want to say it was a productive meeting, but thank you for your support and leadership and helping that group out and kind of getting us, getting them where they need to be. It's appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. I agree.
Ms. Curly, just a question. I don't think anybody's surprised in the reduction of the rate of participation. I would imagine, so if we didn't do all those numbers, there will be an additional surplus to the special ed account. And I'm just curious as far as where does that get transitioned over, because I'm assuming we'll have to dip into that coming into the new year.
So in terms of what account?
So we're, we expected typically before COVID-19, 150-plus participating in the summer program, and we're only at 80. So I'm assuming that has a positive impact on our budget. So my question is, any surplus, where does that go and can we position that to address any concerns coming in once the school, new school year comes into play?
Yes, I'd like to defer to the superintendent on that. There is a savings, but I would like to defer to Mr. Maderas on that.
So Steve, if I may, certainly, you're absolutely correct. Typically, the number wasn't 150, those are the total numbers of letters that go out. But I would agree with you and I think Liz would as well, there are probably about 40 fewer students than we've had in the past. As a result, we don't necessarily have the number of paraprofessionals that are needed onsite. And as a result, we'll be able to hopefully use that to defray services and costs as we look at tuitions and within the special education component. In addition to maybe some regression and some things that we have to address relative to testing and things with kids. So we have an earmark specifically to that money, but clearly there will be, as a result of the need to not hire as many individuals in remote learning, we will be able to then take advantage and hopefully fill some of those gaps that we know are going to take place as we move into the year.
But the short answer, it's part of the same line item in FY '21, correct? It's part of the same FY '21 budget?
Yes, correct.
I'd just like to keep an eye on that to see what savings are so we can carry that over to other additional services, which I'm sure are going to come into play.
Okay. And I think we can get that number to you too and see that as well.
Any other questions on E S Y summer program?
Thanks, Liz.
6D reopening Free Lake Task Force.
So I expected at this point there would have already been a governor's press conference and D E C guidance. We're going to hold off on that and stay tuned in the next 48 hours, because I think that is going to get rolled out through Governor Baker and the Commissioner Riley, maybe as early as tomorrow. But as a result, we did have our first reopening Free Lake Task Force on Monday. It was more of an introductory attendance piece. Sherri Barron is representing the school committee. We did have all the membership there and we kind of walked through what we can expect to do. We didn't jump into it too much, it was about a 45-minute meeting, some questions were raised, but everything really is contingent upon, obviously, what the state guidance is. And we do expect that within the next 24 hours. We were hoping for it. Prior to that, the initial thing a month ago when I set up the meeting was that that was the target date, if you recall, it was the week of the 15th to the 19th. It got pushed back a little bit, but I think it got pushed back in a positive vein. I think the commissioner and the governor, based on new information and the direction of the state, would be there. So our next meeting, we moved it to a night meeting, it will be remote, it will be at 6:30 on Monday. At that point, I hopefully will already have in all my members' hands, in this committee's hands, what that guidance looks like. And we're obviously then going to be rolling into the next seven or eight weeks preparing for the reopening of school. I did say to a lot of students anecdotally that I saw today that visited Gray's in their drive-through that have a great summer and I look forward to seeing you in the fall with a lot of head nods as it relates. So I'm cautiously optimistic that we can return with our students in a safe environment with the parameters. But the reopening task force will have a lot more information for this board, certainly on the 22nd and prior to that. Sherri's representing the group here. We've had a lot of success. Our food service program served over 3,000 meals. We're going to provide some options for the summer and we await the information. And I do expect that by the end of the week from both the governor and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Thank you.
And just a simple yes or no, Mr. Superintendent. There will be a pulse on the community as well as the staff about reentry. I'm sure there's a lot of hesitation about potentially coming back. And so we will have that check-in with those two stakeholders?
Yes, it's essential that we do that, absolutely.
Any other questions on the reopening Free Lake Task Force? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. 7A anti-racism resolution, there's a vote recommended for it. There is a, as we heard in the beginning, there is a resolution that we, from a school committee perspective, and had some conversation. Rick, do you want to open this up before?
Yeah, Mr. Owen, if I may, I do know we have some community members, actually Jenny Carden was one of those individuals. Jenny, I don't know if you noticed while you were tuned in, but I did forward you the resolution in an email. So you have the PDF, if you want to share it with other members, so.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't know if you caught it, I did, because you referenced that and we would, we're going to make this available. I think what's exciting is we are truly in this together as an educational community. Jean Fox, now the vice chair, chair at the time, 10 days ago to two weeks ago, presented this, and it just was the timing of when our next meeting was. Jean brought this forward, as she has stated, school committees throughout the Commonwealth need to take this action. It's not, but I will say this, we have taken a major leap forward here in our community to address this. The resolution is the MAS C resolution. I don't know, I'd like to just turn it to Jean for a second because I don't want to take all the credit, because again, this is a school committee-initiated resolution that is fully supported by the leadership team and, as Jenny and others have said tonight, fully supported by a lot of community members too. So I think we are on the right path in relation to what actions we need to take. And I think when you see the resolution, and I'll turn it to Jean, you will see clearly that we've hit a point, a lot of those five points that you shared, Jenny and others, as it relates to what steps and things we need to take. But Jean, if you don't mind, I don't want to take that piece from you because school committee really did push this early on.
No, thank you for that, Mr. Maderas. I, you know, I'm tuned in and I'm looking and clearly you, the younger generation, are tuned in, it's kind of hard to miss. I see this as a pivotal moment in our society, in our culture, to make real and tangible change by focusing appropriately on something that we have said we're focusing on, but we have not significantly or adequately followed through on. This is an eye-opening time. Our little communities don't feel what you feel and where Mr. Senkowitz teaches, for example, in City of Brockton, or where I used to work in Yedford, it's clearly running deeper in their veins than it is here, but that doesn't make us immune. What it does mean is that we need to build awareness in our communities of the wrongdoings that are happening right now. And by building awareness now, we can build tolerance and understanding. I always tell people, I've said this to everybody, you just don't like what you don't know. So we need for people to understand, skin color doesn't define you and we know that intrinsically. We need to be firm behind our commitment to stand behind that and demonstrate it. And I did have a conversation with Mr. Owen, kind of offline, where there was a bit of concern that we have policies in place that say we're addressing this and sexual orientation and religion and everything else that we do. But this is the Black Lives Matter moment and in my humble opinion, this is the time for us to get behind what many, many, many other districts have already done. So that's pretty much it. I threw it at Mr. Maderas, I pulled the language, I sent it ahead, and it is my hope that this will succeed this evening.
Mrs. Fox, so Mr. Stone, if I may, I know it's somewhat lengthy, but it is, it's critical information. I don't know, Jean, if you want to read the resolution for the group, I mean, we can put it on the website, I'll defer to the chair and vice chair. I know typically we just accept it as is, but considering the significance and the importance and certainly some of the questions that have been raised, it may be worthwhile prior to taking that action to go through that, or if you'd like me to do so, I can certainly do that. It's, I just, you know, I think the significance of this, and I would note, this is consistent with our existing practices and policies and the demands, and the demands are right on target in relation. Please note, it's the only new business item. We had a couple of other items that we could have shared at this meeting and we deferred to push them out to a future meeting, to, again, to drive home the message within our communities, the importance of this. I don't know what your thoughts are about the resolution. I certainly can make it available on the website as I just shared it with the members.
Right, no, I have a pile of paper in front of me, so I'll defer to you for the reading, but I would support that.
Okay. Mr. Owen, do you have any objection to that?
No, we should read as part of the motion, so we can get a motion in a second and open.
So, so the school committee anti-racism resolution, whereas schools have the responsibility to equip students with their civil right of obtaining a free and appropriate public education, it's the responsibility of each school to ensure we create a welcoming community for all students. And whereas it's the responsibility that every district provide to all district staff, including school committee members, annual professional development on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And whereas every district will commit to recruiting and retaining a diverse culturally responsive teaching workforce. And whereas every district will examine their policies for institutional and systematic racialized practices and implement change with sustainable policies that are evidence-based. And whereas every district will incorporate into their curriculum the history of racial oppression and works by black authors and works from diverse perspectives. And whereas we as school leaders can no longer remain silent to the issues of racism and hate that continue to plague our public and private institutions, make it resolved that the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District and all the school districts in the Commonwealth must guarantee that racist practices are eradicated and diverse equity and inclusion is embedded and practiced for all students, families, faculty, and staff. We must ensure our own school culture and that every district in the Commonwealth is anti-racist and that acknowledges that all lives cannot matter until black lives matter. School committee chair, dated June 24, 2020.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the resolution as read. I have a motion by Ms. Fox, so I have a second. Mr. Senkowitz, second. Any discussion by the committee? Ms. Fox?
Yes, just one point I neglected to make earlier, it's probably very evident to you folks, but the reality is by garnering folks. But the reality is by garnering the support of the many districts in our three-hundred-fifty-one community state, we catalyze efforts on Beacon Hill to put some muscle behind it. So that's where it's really going to be impactful. We get the governor, we get the legislature to support this. And they're already doing it. I mean, Boston had a big debate today about how much money the police department should get. But we're going to need resources to support us statewide to make sure that we follow through on what we just heard in the reading. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Senkowitz.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to thank our former graduates that showed up and in force today. I think what an unbelievable statement that makes to our kids that are coming back just to serve our communities. And I can't thank you guys enough for the emails and your attention in this very important matter. I think coming from a district that serves ninety-six percent of students of color, and having gone through the Freetown Lakeville system myself, two thousand and three graduate, and going off to Salem State and sitting in a lecture hall of three hundred, four hundred students, like, oh, wow, this is what the real world looks like. Because I think we're sheltered a little bit in Freetown Lakeville. I think this work is desperately needed. And I challenge Central Office and our building leaders to really build in some meaningful curriculum, looking at African-American history, and kind of starting those meaningful conversations. But I can't thank you folks enough for showing up today. I mean, it really makes us proud in the work that we do to see you advocating in this manner. So, so thank you so incredibly much.
Any other comments or questions from the committee? We'll open up to a roll call vote.
Jean Fox?
Yes.
Eve Bowen?
Yes.
Sherri Barron?
Just come back, Dr.
Yes.
Okay. Jennifer Blum?
Yes.
Robert Clark?
Yes.
Laura Ramsden?
Yes.
Will Senkowitz?
Yes.
Eve Sylvia?
Yes.
The record shows passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for that. Onto reports to the committee. Back to you, Ms. Lopes.
Just have a quick update on our performance contracting. It's not in the packet because this happened in the last week, but we did, we went out for an RFP for funding. I think I reached out to about ten different banks and we received two. Only one of those proposals had all the information that was requested, and that was Bank of America. Right now, I'm working with legal to go through the contracts, and I should be able to announce that award in the next week or so. So I just wanted to let you know that we are moving forward with everything right now.
And if I may add, as Ashley pointed out, that will allow us to, in a timely fashion, address some of these projects towards the middle to tail end of the summer and into the fall.
Related to that, are we, and I'm going to, the Bob provision of prior contracts, that if they don't meet a timeframe, that there is a potentially rebate? I know it's going to have impact in the fall if they don't complete some of these projects by that timeframe.
Correct. There is language in there that states that they must be done with at least one boiler in every school before heating season starts. And Train is well aware of that. We had legal look at the contracts, so we should have that secured.
Start of heating season. Any other questions? Thank you.
Steve?
Yes.
I just wanted to say to the alumni who are here, this is going to be riveting the rest of this meeting, but you really don't have to stay if you don't want to. We're just really glad you came.
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you for having us and hearing us out. We really appreciate it. And we really appreciate the steps you're taking so far. And we hope to see more of that in the future. And I'm sure you'll be hearing from us soon. So thank you so much.
Take care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you.
Dr. Kuplinsky.
So Dr. Kuplinsky, Pat, you have the luxury of getting in between an adjournment of the school committee meeting with the last presentation, I think, we have here. Pat, what do you have for us?
Nice. I'll keep it brief. So we've started purchasing curriculum resources, especially the online resources that will supplement our content areas. So those are moving forward. We've also worked on getting some tools that will enhance our Google Suite, again, for the fall, to make teaching and learning a little easier for both families and the teachers. The staff survey results, again, were overwhelmingly positive. These teachers just did an amazing job throughout all of this. They did appreciate the support that they had received. In the huge win column was the increased camaraderie and collegiality that they all experienced working together. And today, in talking to the admin team, it's something that we want to capitalize on and keep moving forward. Everybody had some comment to say about how well they worked with their teams. And also getting to know families and students a little bit better was also a big push for there. They also shared what they needed, which I think I shared with you, the bullets from each question. And again, the updated Chromebooks was huge, that teachers were asking for, as well as technological resources. So those are the things we're going to look at in the fall, moving forward. Our summer reading requirements for all schools has been posted already. It's on our website. And then in response to the parent survey, they were looking for more resources and where they could find them. So, you know, we had created the Remote Learning tab. And on that tab, we added iReady Technical and Troubleshooting Guide for families, because that was something, especially K to five, that was coming up as a little bit of a problem. And also the Parents' Guide to Google Classroom. And then moving forward into next year to start incorporating opportunities for parents to have some type of P D or some type of small learning opportunity with whatever it is we're using curriculum-wise or teaching instructionally for parents.
Thank you, Pat.
Dr. Kuplinsky, any feedback related to the types of tools and consistency such as Zoom versus Google Classroom?
Yes.
And how are we going to address that going into the fall?
Overwhelmingly, people were, people want a unified platform. We have Google Suite. Most people, most of the teachers that responded, wanted to know more about Google Suite. It was the reason why I looked into Screencastify and getting that license, because it works very, very well with Google Suite. So we're going to move forward with that. It does provide a consistent platform. It is something that parents can also use. But the other thing that came out of the survey was to make a more concerted effort to teach the kids how to use Google Suite pieces, even the little ones, so that when they are home using this, they require less input from their parents, that it becomes something that we're actually teaching as part of our curriculum, maybe in library media.
Mr. Senkowitz.
Pat, thank you so much for that update. I appreciate it. I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit. And if I, what would you say if I asked you, what would be the biggest professional development need over the summer or prior to returning next year for our staff regarding just kind of grappling with this new virtual world?
I think, I think that, I think what we're going to have to do is, we're going to use Google Suite as our platform. But we're going to have to differentiate that, because a lot of teachers ramped themselves up to certain degrees. And we certainly don't want to do anything where they're going to go backwards. So I have been in touch with some organizations that do provide P D in this arena, and in particular, will differentiate for us. And there are nuances of like Screencastify. So somebody knows how to use it, but the depth of what they can do with it, they don't know. So give teachers an opportunity to differentiate their P D and give them offerings, which we had done in the first couple of days of school for this year. And, you know, after I got input from teachers, they liked having a menu of choices where they could direct their own learning. I need support here, not here, and move forward that way. But definitely remote learning and ways to capitalize on, and for one thing, live teaching and being able to live teach, but also show documents. Google Suite can do that, so can Screencastify. Teachers don't necessarily know the range of what they can use that for.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Will.
Before we go to the superintendent, Pat, I know Google Classroom has been in the district at least five or six years. What training are we doing today that these teachers are not able to do that we either need to tweak, expand upon, what have you?
Well, during the COVID remote learning crisis, I had created an in-house tech support team. And so as teachers were sending me emails, or as I was in common planning time meetings with them, and problems came up, I don't know how to do this, I'm struggling with that, I asked some members of that tech support team, in particular Drew Davy. And he would create five-minute how-to tutorials that I would get out to those particular teachers, so that the P D was ongoing even though it was remote. As far as what kind of P D they had in the past before I got here on Google Suite, I don't know. It seems overwhelmingly that it's scattered in ability to use it. Going forward, I'd like it to become more uniform and more, a more integral part of how we teach. And so our P D opportunities moving forward will consistently, step by step, bring people to that point throughout this year.
Mr. Medeiras.
Thank you, Steve. I patiently waited. I want to answer Will's question. First of all, I support completely what Dr. Kuplinsky said, but I just want to kind of give a big picture to this. She's absolutely correct. And we did training. Keep in mind, I think the two areas that you're going to see as priorities for Freetown Lakeville are at my superintendent's executive institute, because they are the two themes in the state. We have a two-day session. It's virtual. The first day is about reopening schools and what the new normal looks. And it really speaks to the question you just asked. Why is it that a suite and things that we have had for four or five years and had some training, why was it so challenging? It was so challenging because we never envisioned that we were going to be so immersed in remote learning and those expectations for all of our kids at one time. No excuse, but it's the truth. And it's certainly something we can do systematically. So one aspect of our priorities is going to be on reopening schools and what that looks like for instruction, both remote and the classroom. The other piece is going to go back to our new business item, which is going to be on theme equity, the issue of equity and racial justice, right? I think we need to look long and hard. It is what every superintendent and every district is going to be looking at in the Commonwealth and something we're going to focus on. So I just, Will's question was great. Steve, your follow-up was excellent. Pat's answer was right on. We're going to be looking at reopening our schools and a major component of that being the remote learning and things like this and learning from that. And I think we, you know, we were pressed into work in March, right? I mean, let's be honest, folks, as a superintendent of school, we went from a Friday where I said, we're, you know, we're coming back, to all of a sudden shutting down on the Monday, never anticipating at that time we weren't returning. And as a result, we've learned a lot. And I'm very excited about the potential professional development opportunities for reopening and instruction, but also to address some of the awareness that's out there. Thanks, Steve, for allowing me to do that. I know it was really Pat's report piece in turn, but I just thought it was important for you to hear the big picture as well. Thanks.
Any questions for any of the administration? Mr. Sylvia.
Thanks, Superintendent, for that. Just a quick question. I love that, number one, the responses, because I was hearing the same thing with the teamwork and the collaboration and the meaningful connections. I mean, what your staff has been able to do in connecting with families, but with each other, has been amazing. On the number of responses recorded, is that about half of the teachers that responded? And if so, I would just be curious if it was all classroom teachers. I'd be curious what specialists and some of the other interventionists would feel and how they, in the event we have a remote learning model in the fall, or in part, how they would feel about remote learning and plugging themselves in a different way.
The survey was anonymous, so we did not ask people to identify themselves as specialist, classroom teachers, or grade levels. I wanted to get honest feedback and comments from them. We didn't collect email addresses from anybody. We got, I basically just wanted to know purely, what do you need from me and the district moving forward? What is this going to look like next year? And please be honest with me as far as what you see as your area. One of the questions I asked them was, where do you think you need to grow? So most people, if they think that's being collected, are not going to be honest about a weakness. But I needed to know that. So I had to give up some of, you know, that kind of specificity in order to get what I needed to move forward for developing something really good for P D next year.
But for both Pat and Steve, as you know, principals drilled down with their staff and got into more of the specifics, because you're absolutely right. It's critical that we know where, you know, specialists, as opposed to special educators and teachers feel. And we feel we're getting that information through the schools as well. Thanks.
Any other questions? I will say, just in closing to that, I think there's a lot of work that goes in there. I would like to see, not as a full presentation or anything, but what curriculum changes are we incorporating to address some of the technology challenges at the grade levels, right? So you mentioned the media specialists. Are we starting typing at that age? So as we come into this new age of remote learning, how are we preparing our grade levels as they progress? By the time they're at the middle school, they're fully immersed in working everything through Google Classroom. So again, not necessarily answered today, and not necessarily a full presentation, but just how, as we get toward the opening of the new year, what the curriculum changes would be.
Sure.
Steve, I have one, I'm, we've talked about this before, about doing follow-up surveys. Perhaps down the road, we could keep it anonymous, but ask what a role is, because you're not going to be able to identify everyone. I just think it's the, you know, to Steve Sylvia's point, I think it would be really helpful to disaggregate some of that information and see where we may have some holes or some more work or where we may be excelling. Just a thought.
Agreed.
I'll, moving on the agenda, subcommittee updates. We'll tackle that at the next meeting, especially we'll reorg the subcommittee. Any other business that may properly come before the meeting? I will bring up one thing. Lake Cam did come in and they are recording this meeting, but I'll just put that on the record. So they are recording this meeting. So thank you very much to those folks, especially just coming off of a Lakeville town meeting. Anything else from any of the members of administration?
Mr. Owen, I would simply just like to add, our next meeting, it's referenced a couple of times, is, will hopefully be onsite at high school. It's July twenty-second at six thirty. And obviously, we'll start preparing that agenda. And we are still projected to have what will hopefully be a traditional high school graduation on Saturday, August first as well. So those are the two up to, big events in addition to the reopening information that's coming.
So I guess to address the hopefully, it will be onsite upon acquit. And then what we just need from you is what guidelines you would want us to follow upon entrance, what have you for that. So.
And you're talking about the school committee meeting.
That is correct, yes.
Yep. Absolutely.
Barron.
Steve, Mr. Owen, I would like to suggest that we put on the next school committee meeting on July twenty-second, the resolution for COVID-nineteen state funding. That's another resolution that the M A S C has recommended. I think it's an outstanding one. I think we're being proactive by looking for, I'm reading it now, full reimbursement for whatever COVID-nineteen expenses are required by the state mandates for the state to pay for those. So I think we should be signing on to that, if you could put it on the agenda, please.
Anything else? At seven fifty-one, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Jean Fox made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Senkowitz, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection?
We're all set, Steve.
Yeah. So seeing there is a unanimous, we don't need a roll call vote. Have a good night, everybody.